Call of Davidson County Board of Commissioners meeting for Monday, June the 12th to order. We thank everyone for being here and we thank the folks that are watching online for tuning in to participate in county government. We'll have the invocation and pledge of allegiance by Commissioner Watford.
Thank you. If you will, join me in prayer. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this day and all the blessings it brings. We ask for your guidance and presence as we go about our tasks and responsibilities. Please give us the strength and resilience to face whatever challenges may come our way and help us to be a source of love and support for those around us. We pray for your protection and care for all those in need and for your wisdom and discernment to guide us in making good decisions and choices. We trust in your love and care for us and we pray for your continued presence in our lives. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
We have a, you can, you can face this way and we'll face that way. We've got, we've covered both ways.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner Mizell cannot be with us at the meeting. Can I have a motion and second to, to excuse him?
Mr. Chairman?
Verbally.
I make a motion to excuse Commissioner Mizell.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, six of five, saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed. Alright, recognition. We have started a, um, I guess, a habit, for lack of anything else, of trying to recognize all the veterans as they come into our meetings and to give them a Davidson County pin that has veteran on it. And we're gonna let Commissioner Shore do that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As the chairman said, we do like to recognize our veterans. So if we have any veterans in the audience tonight, would you please stand and be recognized?
Just two. Thank you.
Larry, I'm pretty sure you've got a pin, but sir, have you, have we ever given you a pin? Would you come up and I'd be glad and honored to give you one? Thank you for your service.
Thank you, sir.
A hundred. Would you give him that one also?
Thank you. I love that. Alright, our council of chambers representative is David Snap. Is he here this evening? Missed out on that hundred dollars I think. Alright, we have one last one and our representative and past Commissioner Larry Potolee Dussel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, I got to sit there honored for 21 years and I, during that time, we had a lot of good employees in the county and we still do. And I'd like to recognize one tonight. I'm not sure if he knows it, knows it not, but if Larry Wayne James would come up. I'm supposed to be in Raleigh, so if I'm here, you know it's an important event. During my 21 years on the board, there's a lot of families who have their mom and dad and son and daughter available because of Larry and all the people, EMS and all the calls that they make. So on behalf of Roy Cooper, I'd like to read you this, Larry. The Order of the Longleaf Pine with the rank of Ambassador Extraordinary, privilege to enjoy fully all the rights granted to members of this exalted order, among which is a special privilege to propose the following North Carolina toast and select company anywhere in the free world. Here's to the land of the Longleaf Pine, the summer land where the sun does shine, where the wheat grows strong and the strong grow great. Here's to down home in the Old North State. On behalf of Governor Cooper, I'd like to present you with this, Larry.
Thank you.
Good job, buddy.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry. There we go. One, two, three. One, two, three. One, two, three.
Sheriff can't count to three, so we'll do it on the, we'll do it on two.
One, two, three. There we go.
I don't know what they told you to get you here, but I had nothing to do.
Well, I can't read the agenda, but I hope something was fish when I was told that the sheriff was going to be doing something for my son. I did not see anything like that on. But I, but you know, I, I did see this and I didn't see a name with it. So I was a little suspicious, but, um...
I'm sorry I lied, Sheriff.
But I appreciate it.
Alright, thank you, Larry. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you.
Good job, y'all.
Thank you, Larry.
I love you, man. We have a time for a public address and if you'd like to participate in that and speak to us through the public address time, please sign up here. We'll give you a moment or two. That's enough. No, really, you could sign up. We have the adoption of the agenda and due to the anticipated length of the public hearings that we have, we're gonna move to follow the deliberation agenda. Mr. Dill has requested item 9C, Presentation of Updated Policy by Human Resources be removed. It will be placed back on the June 26th agenda. Any other changes for the agenda?
Madam Clerk, do we remove that?
I have a motion and second to adopt the amended agenda.
Gotcha. I make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we approve the amended agenda.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, cast your vote. Is anyone registered to speak on the public address?
All of the votes are in and that motion carries five votes, six, zero.
Alright. We have the consent agenda. It's a lengthy one. Is there any of the commissioners that would like to pull any of the items on the consent agenda off to discuss?
Mr. Chairman, I don't have to pull any of them off, but there's a couple I'm looking at and I'd like to ask our health board member if the health board has reviewed any of those. So I will be at the board's discretion whether to ask it or pull them.
I don't mind you asking. It's the health director here.
She's not here this evening.
He's not here.
She had a family obligation.
I was gonna ask the health board member, it's X, looks like it's W, X, Y, and Z. I didn't know if the health board had reviewed any of these memorandums or agreements. So that's to put our families together.
So far as you know, any of those that he mentioned, time sensitive?
I'm gonna ask Ms. Woodard's help on this because she is counsel to the board of health and she had reviewed all of those documents. I had occasion to speak with the director earlier tonight. I believe each of these is simply a continuation of a contract that has been in place for an extended period and the contracts are not with the health board. They are rather with the county. And I, the director is aware of these, has approved of the form of these, but that the contract itself is required to be approved by the Board of Commissioners.
So this appears to me to look like something we'd at least want the health board to review. Is that, and it concerns them, so?
It has been done administratively in-house for an extended period. I would certainly defer to the board as to whether you wanted to have input from the board of health. I don't think there has been a perception across the parking lot that that was necessary before now, but it is a contract with the county, not with the board of health. But you're right, it relates to health matters.
I believe we can contract start when you offer.
Yeah, they're offering next year.
Yeah, I got a feeling this is pretty time sensitive, but again, this was something I would like for the board to review. That would be my first choice.
I'll make sure I take that back to the board. Mr. Yates?
And I see there's a couple other ones too, and I take it that probably their board may hopefully review some of these agreements.
Rather than pull, then we approve the consent agenda and then have these forwarded to the board of health to make a report? Is that fine?
That's fine. Like I say, I know it's time sensitive. I figured it was July 1st, but again, I'd feel a whole lot better if they had reviewed these and please pass their recommendation along to us.
Okay.
Alright, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion and second to approve the consent agenda.
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Your second?
Second.
Any discussion? Cast your vote. Casey, can you make sure that this, those items get to the board of health to look at?
Mr. Chair, can I get your vote, please?
Who?
You.
I voted.
Yes, sir.
We're not in Chicago.
All of the votes are in and that motion carries five votes, six, zero, red.
Thank you. Items for decision, deliberation. We have an update by Davidson County Local Food Network and Piedmont Fresh. And Mr. Canoy will lead us off. There's a whole lot of Mr. Canoys there.
We have a couple guests tonight. Good evening, Commissioners. First of all, we'd like to thank you for your public service as elected officials and for giving us a chance to present today to give you an update. Today we have with us Grace Canoy, the president of the Davidson County Local Food Network. Zach Ryerson is the Piedmont Fresh Food Hub manager, who is also graduate of the Early College at Davidson, Davie Community College and co-owner of Ryerson Farms. Anna Davis, intern for Davidson County Local Food Network, student farmer at the Sustainable Agriculture Program at DDCC. And Sam Boring, horticulture agent at Davidson County, oh, he's over there, at Davidson County Cooperative Extension and a board member. And myself, Carrie Canoy, also a board member of the Davidson County Local Food Network. Since last time we presented to the chamber, we've had many developments that we are excited to tell you about today. Since 2014, we've been establishing and building local networks and supporting our farmers' markets and farmers through micro grants, community outreach, and providing marketing support for all of our stakeholders. We're happy to announce that we received our 501(c)(3) status August 17th, 2022. One of the main motivating factors for this decision was to be able to implement our Piedmont Fresh initiative and to be able to pursue larger grant opportunities.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So on September 2022, we launched Piedmont Fresh, which is the first and only local food hub in central North Carolina. We have the potential to fill the void between Raleigh and Charlotte. In essence, Piedmont Fresh is an online farmers' market. Consumers can conveniently place orders from Saturday noon to Monday midnight and then farmers and bakers are promptly notified of those orders, enabling them to harvest or bake to order. The food hub staff efficiently packs the orders and ensures delivery on Thursdays to designated drop-off locations across the Piedmont. Currently, we have drop-off locations in Tomsville, Lexington, and Winston-Salem, and we will have an additional Winston-Salem location starting June 19th. And our High Point location is scheduled to be available, I believe, July 7th? July 7th.
Wow.
The streamlined process of ordering online and then harvesting to order minimizes food waste, but also guarantees that the consumers receive the freshest and most nutritious produce, emphasizing the value of consuming locally harvested food soon after harvest. However, one of the major obstacles of local food is accessibility and availability. So Piedmont Fresh is one of the ways that we are trying to bridge the gap for individuals who are unable to attend farmers' markets on Saturdays and for farmers who cannot participate in weekday markets due to time constraints. Many of them have full-time jobs in addition to farming. So I'm gonna present, or passes on to Zach Ryerson, who is our current food hub manager, and he will update you on Piedmont Fresh.
Thank you, Grace, and for having us this evening. So since starting the end of September of 2022, Piedmont Fresh has moved $20,525.24 of local food from here within 100 miles of Davidson County from our farmers to local consumers. We have 203 registered customers currently on our storefront and we offer 27 unique varieties of produce. So when you go to a grocery store, you know, we've got 27 unique items from kohlrabi to all sorts of things people look at in their life, well, what is this? So Piedmont Fresh has been an opportunity for young farmers like myself to enter the marketplace and scale our agribusiness. Seven out of 15 vendors currently on Piedmont Fresh are under the age of 45, three of which that are under 35. That compares to the national average of farmers in the United States of 57 years old and with each census that continues to rise. So, you know, we're looking at half the age now for our local farmers. We're creating a system that allows farmers to broaden their distribution opportunities and encourages them to pursue farming as a viable business opportunity in our county. Davidson County, as you may know, is the second to last in supplying food grown in the county to our Piedmont triad region. We are working to remedy our low rank mainly as Davidson County Local Food Network and with Piedmont Fresh in many ways. We are working to improve the environment for farming in this region, especially for the next generation of farmers. Piedmont Fresh is one way of accessing locally grown products and I'm happy to announce that the Lexington Farmers Market now has a weekday location at Plaza Parkway. I also do sit on the board for the Lexington Farmers Market, so we're very excited to bring that. I believe, James, you were there for the opening, possibly?
Blue, I was, yes.
So I'm happy to announce that that is now open on Tuesday evenings for our community to shop between Planet Fitness and Dollar Tree at Plaza Parkway. As far as food insecurity and community health, Piedmont Fresh not only sells products, that also serve as a vendor for second harvests farm fresh nourish program. We provide fresh locally grown produce to the Cooperative Community Ministry, CCM, and Thomasville, their pantry every week. Our national delivery was last week and we will continue this program for the next 11 weeks. This benefits both the clients of CCM and our farmers who are paid full market value for their produce in this program. We eagerly anticipate continuing and actively pursuing similar interests and initiatives while also seeking opportunities to introduce educational cooking classes that promote the consumption of fresh local foods. Through these programs, we not only provide reliable market avenues for our farmers, but establish access to nutritious food for our residents, particularly those facing food security challenges in the county. And at this time, I'll pass it back to Grace.
So of course, we look at farming as an economic development initiative and we are working to build our agriculture pipeline. In line, in line with our mission to educate the public on agriculture and nutritious food, the Davidson County Local Food Network is excited to host our fourth annual Davidson County Farm Tour, and this time we are offering two days for participants to visit farms across Davidson County and Randall and Rowan County. The farm tour is on June 24th and 25th. This event offers attendees the chance to visit Piedmont Fresh farm vendors and other farmers, engage engage with the farmers, and gain a deeper understanding of the efforts involved in growing food and producing food. This year, we expanded the farm tour into a two-day event, actually because of feedback from past participants. We have 10 farms participating, and one of which is the Davidson-Davy Community College's Sustainable Ag Farm. And we've given them an opportunity to showcase their new farm and to promote their agriculture program. One of our major goals is to grow farmers, because we feel that farmers are a vital part of our economic development. Local food businesses, farm businesses, increase community vitality, livability, and resilience. We realize that we need to create a pipeline for first-generation farmers. So we have offer, we actually offer volunteer opportunities as well as paid internships with Davidson County Local Food Network. In fact, our current intern, Anna Davis, is enrolled in DDC's Sustainable Ag Program, and I'd like her to introduce herself.
Hi there. So my name is Anna Davis, and as Grace mentioned, I'm a part of DDCC's Sustainable Ag Program for its first year. So a little background on me, I actually graduated from MNC State. I have a degree in nutrition science and genetics. And so originally, what I wanted to do was go pre-med and always bring healthcare back to Tomsville, Davidson County area. And COVID threw that for a loop, so came back and found the Sustainable Ag Program and kind of found a new passion that I've always loved farming, loved agriculture, and found a new passion to bring sustainable agriculture back to Davidson County and really grow up for, like she mentioned, young farmers and farmers that don't really have a pipeline to do the during-the-week things with the farmers' market. So that was one of my big factors in getting into Sustainable Ag. So as part of that, I have to do a work-based learning portion for the summer. So finding that, came across this, and it just fit like a glove coming into this program and really being a part of the marketing side of everything. So I have the agriculture backside, I have the garden and everything with that, livestock. So this was a wonderful way to get into the community, make connections, and really get on the marketing side and making it available for the community. So with that, I found some needs in the community where we delivered with the nourish program and really delivering to communities in the area that are underserved and really needing some access to fresh local food, you know, contributing to food deserts and all. So with this, when people are able to directly buy from farmers, it directly impacts their eating behaviors and their mentality on fresh food and what food means to them and how it empowers their body. In this, directly writing to healthcare, healthcare costs for them, and improving their family and local networks. So with this, and we'll turn it back over to Carrie.
One of the challenges, or one of the greatest barriers for new farmers, is the access to land. We have not addressed this challenge yet at Davidson County Local Food Network, but we would love to start a conversation and how we can remedy this problem. Through things like farm conservation, expanded voluntary agricultural districts, and farm incubator hubs, that sort of thing. We're sure that this topic is going to be addressed at this year's Triad Food Symposium, which is gathering the local food networks in the area. And we invite your input and guidance as we move forward. We want to thank you for having us today. I want to leave you with a couple of thoughts. Per the NC, per the North Carolina Extension, NC 10% campaign, North Carolinians spend $35 billion on food each year. If just 10% of those purchases were from North Carolina farms, that's a dollar and 5 cents a day locally. About 3.5 billion would stay in the North Carolina statewide economy. And you can do those numbers in the county as well. As you are the leaders in our community, we invite you to participate in our Davidson County 10% Campaign Challenge. That is, if you could just spend $7.35 a week at your local farmers' market, local farm stand, or online at Piedmont Fresh, this can help us reach our goal of 10% local. And please challenge your friends and colleagues to do the same. If we can begin to integrate this 10% campaign into our daily habits, we will be on our way to becoming the produce basket of the triad, which means prosperous farmers and a vibrant and healthy community. Thank you.
Thank you. Wait just a second. Does the Board have any questions?
I do, Commissioner.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Troy, how many farms we have in this county?
When you talk about farms in the county, that's a number that we get from all types of farms. This is, this type of farming is just a portion, it's a piece of the farm. So we have roughly right at 1,000 farms in the county.
I understand you to say that Davidson County is the second from the bottom.
What that is, second to last of food that actually is sold in the triad. So we don't benefit from any, much from what is grown here.
No, I'm not insinuating that. What I was asking you is what actions are you taking to reel in our farms in Davidson County? I hear a lot about these other counties you keep mentioning, but then you turn around and say that Davidson County is second from the bottom? Why?
Okay. Come on up, Troy.
If you look at, what was the figure you gave in terms of dollar values at far this year?
Oh, that's.
For Piedmont Fresh?
Yeah, 20,000. 20,000. Davidson County is over $55 million in farm gate sales. We are a leader in farming. This is but a small portion of it. Think about, you know, the corn, the soybeans, the cattle. I mean, two truckloads of soybeans is over $25,000. You know, we are a big agricultural county in that, again, we are on a steady decline. We've been looking at, I mean, a steady climb, rather. We've been looking at these numbers. Actually, when we did the 200-year celebration for Davidson County, we went back and looked at the historic data. And we had a whole lot more farms back in the late 50s than we do now. But think about this, our agricultural gross income was less than $4 million. Today, we are over $50 million, 55-plus. And so we've seen a lot of changes in agriculture. You think about the tobacco, how that was, you know, back in the 80s. There was a lot of hogs in the county. We've had dairies. Now we're switching, you see a whole lot more poultry. But we can break those numbers down, and I guess the bottom line is the fresh and local food, that's a piece of the pie. But the big pie is out here, you know, with our cattle, corn, soybeans, that kind of thing.
Well, through research, I know what you're saying is true. We've got great farms, we've got great farmers in this county.
That's right.
What I don't understand is why we're second from the bottom as far as participation in this program.
I caught that too when she said that, and I'm thinking, where'd that come from?
It's a, so Troy's talking about commodity farming. We're talking about vegetable produce, and this, this number we're talking about is that's, so that's sold outside of the triad. We're talking about food that is sold within the triad for people who live in the triad. So we're second to last, it's not that we're saying we're second to last in farming, we're second to last in actual food that's being consumed by people who live in the triad from Davidson County. That's what that number is.
So it's like urban farming, because from what I'm hearing, it's like the big commercial farming.
Chris.
Correct.
Like that. Commissioner, still has a, oh, go ahead.
To me, we can spin this any way you want to spin it. But when you say that we're second from the bottom, I want to do better than that, because I know our farmers can do better.
Yeah, that's why we're here, and that's, and also, the entry level for new farmers. So we have an aging farmers. I mean, in Tomsville, we have two or three farmers who are 90.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, and we need new farmers. And that's really what we're trying to do, because, and they can't start at 300 acres. They can't start at that, and they don't have contracts. It's totally different. They have to find a new market and grow their farm. And so what we're trying to do is create this agriculture pipeline so they can start scaling in a way that you're really making money. Because, you know, one acre, you're homesteading, right? And people don't really understand what it takes if you're not from a farming family, to get into farming is quite the barrier. And that's what we're trying to build.
Okay. The problems that you have laid out, are these problems not apparent in other counties that are doing much better than us?
We are not the only county who suffers from this.
So we're second from the bottom.
Yeah, but we could be like off 1%, maybe, you know? And the other item is, so you, it's almost like you do better when you're, if you grow in bulk, you have a contract and you're selling it. It's like sweet potatoes, largest export agriculture for North Carolina. Doesn't mean all that's coming back and serving the communities here. So when you're doing wheat, corn, the market's bigger, that's a global food supply chain. We're trying to feed locals with healthy food that we are growing here. And the other thing is, people don't realize, you know, 90% of lettuce is grown in a valley in California. And when that Colorado River dries out, you know, then you're relying further away. Why can't we grow this here? Why can't we have our own valley here of produce? And be, keeping the money here is really the goal, you know? Sustaining our own food security from a real economic level, that's the grand vision, right? We shouldn't be relying on California for vegetables, like that's preposterous. And so what we're trying to do is have a way for these young farmers to have a real economic viable future in Davidson County, supplying both Davidson County, Winston, Greensboro, High Point, Charlotte. We should be able to do that here.
Chris.
So the only question that I was having was, and the Commissioners up here, we absolutely support our farms here locally in Davidson County. When you're looking at the commercial farms, it's expensive. And under the current administration, it's so much more expensive to have the seed, fertilizer, water, getting the ergonomics, the transportation, the equipment to be able to run a family farm, and to make it profitable to where they don't sell that land to build, you know, houses on. And we get that, okay? But when we're looking at the stuff that has come out of our county, soybeans, corn, meat, poultry, milk, hog farms, tobacco, those have been the big ones. But to do the tomatoes, the cucumbers, the little things like that, they can't run that on a large scale, it's not profitable for them. So I think what y'all are focusing on is more like the urban center, you know, farms, and the smaller buildup farms to where they can have a profit and not a lot of equipment, is that correct?
I believe so. What we're focusing on, so when we look at when we have crises like COVID or things like if you have a natural disaster, something happens in the middle of the country, all our food is spread out, and we've already sent that out, and that's raw material. So what we have here, what we're trying to grow, we're trying to build farmers to contracts. We're trying to provide a platform for those local farmers, because some local farmers out there, and North Carolina is a big local farm state, are making money and going full-time. And so that's our goal, is to help farmers go, local farmers go full-time once they're selling vegetables and local meats and bring them into the system. And we realize that the more we keep our system intact, when there is some kind of disaster, that sort of thing, that's resiliency for us, and then we're going to be doing well. During COVID, I might add, our farmers' markets, and I believe Sam Boring contested this, I think there were some other ag agents, and they were at a meeting, and, correct if I'm wrong, and they were blown away that we were doing so well. Our markets were growing during that period of time. We had some really good turnout, so we are in a good place. We do have a good platform. And we're excited because we're the only food, local food hub in the middle of the state, so we feel like we can help influence the outside areas. And not only grow our farms, those farms on the outside of Davidson County, they're right on the edge, and they sell at Piedmont Fresh, I mean, they sell at Tomsville and Lexington Farmers Markets as well.
So I guess my question is, is your target, these bigger farms, so that they can start producing some of this other types of food? Or are you in a totally different demographic?
They're making their money. There's no incentive for them to actually do what these farmers are doing. These are new farmers. They already have their contracts.
That's all I need.
So they don't, they don't need us.
Got you.
They've already got their, these are for new farmers.
Thank you.
Thank you all, I appreciate the presentation. Zach, I believe you said there was 10 farms, local farms, participating in the?
We have 14 producers now, we've got a couple more.
How many did you have last year?
We bootstrapped this with five at the end of.
I think, I was trying to remember what she said last year.
We bootstrapped with five. One of those was an artisan baker here in Lexington. But we bootstrapped that program together. And I think it was until February, we started adding new producers for this year. So half of that time span for that 20,000 that we've moved was with six producers. And myself, this is our second year as a production farm. I'm a first-generation farmer with my wife, she's from Panama. We have a four-month-old, so we're just trying to build a food system that, you know, he can rely on, you know, when all of us are gone, so.
Thank you. That sounds great. One other question, Mr. Chairman, and I'll be done. I know you guys say that you've tried to help some, and Zach, you just said you bootstrapped one. What are you guys doing to help these farmers? I mean, do y'all have grants? Do you have grants through the federal government or state? Are you actually capable of helping some? If I wanted to start a farm, can you help me get that started? Because you're right.
Yeah, so I can, I can speak to that.
I was born and raised farming, so I know, it's.
So I can speak to it. Like I said, this is our second full-year production. Nobody, my grandpa had a little backyard garden on the side of their yard, and did it the old commercial way. We work on a lot of sustainable practices, so partnering with Sam, partnering with CFSA, Sarah Ronkel, who is their education director, I believe. She has come down from three hours west of here to teach classes for up-and-coming farmers to learn things like that. So we have quite the network, especially the network that Grace and Carrie has worked on since 14 to, you know, put farmers there, but it's a network. And if I have farmers I can call vice versa, you know, we've got people like Anna that just, you know, they want to do it, and now they're finally feeling inspired to do it. So yes, I can, I can personally attest to that as a farmer, yes.
That's great. Thank you all for what you're doing. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any questions? Question? I have no questions. Go ahead, Troy.
But talking about the total farm, though, when you think about Davidson County agriculture, we work, like I said, you've got to understand this is a portion. Because we've got 157 people growing corn and soybeans out there. We've got, I don't know, well over 200 people with cattle. And a lot of the numbers that are not captured there, like I'm sure the beef cattle that I feed out in Finish to sell for freezer beef is not part of these numbers. And so those numbers don't get caught. And when you look at the agricultural statistics, you know, and that's done nationally every five years, but North Carolina does it annually. So we can go back, we have Carl Bernhardt's records, and we can pull all this stuff together. They can even, we can even tell you how many, at one time, how many pool-type combines were in the county, how many telephones, how many cars.
Wow.
So, but, things like this, when we talk about that $55 million, we're not capturing these numbers in there. That's not numbers that are added on to that, you know? We've got more that could be added, and that's a good way to do that. That's kind of like the gravy, yes, you know? We like steak and potatoes, but it sure is nice to have some asparagus to go with it. So, and when we work with farmers, like, helping farmers, like, we just did a project right now with a farmer putting GPS guidance on a tractor. You know, that was a $12,000 project that we worked with Ag Cost Share to do, but that was for one farmer on one piece of equipment. And so that's, you've got to look at the different scale, you know? Me, I love tractors, so you know?
Thank you, Troy.
The bigger the tractor, the better, that's me.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, Troy, you and I are standing on the same page, okay? What I was responding to, wasn't so much your program, is, in my opinion, we've got the best farmers anywhere.
Amen.
And they don't deserve for the public to hear that we're second from last without an explanation. So that was my point of bringing that forward.
We appreciate that.
Thank you.
It was a very good presentation, and we appreciate it. And hopefully, by having a presentation up here and being online, that you'll get a whole lot more customers. I know this, if you go to the farmers' market on Saturday morning, it ain't nothing to spend $7.35.
That's right. That's exactly right.
Commissioner McCord, could I say something as well? The Canoys have just been passionate about this for years. Met them a good, good many years ago, and they've been working so hard, and I just want to say thank you personally. They've come and talked to me, I've met with them, you know, and they've talked to me about this vision for the longest time, and I appreciate it. And I appreciate it coming to fruition. I was at the Tomsville Farmers Market four of, you know, often, I go there often, you know? And yet I have a huge garden in the backyard, you know? But I love to say what I'm seeing, and y'all are a big part of it. Thank you.
Thanks again. Appreciate it. You'll have to give us an update next year.
Maybe in the fall.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda is Senior Services Transportation Budget Request, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tisha, I'm probably going to need your help with this one if I can, borrow you for a minute.
Um, Tisha, I'm probably gonna need your help with this one if I can borrow you for a minute. Um, let me set it up while she's coming up. Um, Ms. Chairman and I think Commissioner Wofford at a, uh, senior services board meeting recently inquired about these trips, these medical trips. I think the agenda is doing a pretty good job of explaining what's going on here. I mean, they, they've doing about sixteen and a half thousand trips, probably looking at doing nineteen thousand this year. Uh, these are medical trips and some of them are going out of county and as you can see, the trips drip, uh, dipped down during COVID and are spiking back up. The request before you and Tisha's here for any of the details, basically in a nutshell is to, uh, would the county participate in helping, uh, funding to get through the end of the year? And so that's about eighty thousand dollars on top of what's already been spent. Um, and two departments actually been gracious enough to, um, assist here, DSS and Planning. So I'll turn it over to Tisha for any questions.
Have anything to add?
No, I think the, um, some of the history on this is that, as you can see by the, um, the data that you have in front of you, is that we have increased in transportation. A lot of this happened during COVID when we stopped transporting to our aggregate nutrition sites because we were closed. And, uh, we found that a lot of the local doctors' offices were closing. And so they were sending most of their patients to Forsyth County and Guilford and, um, High Point, which is Guilford. But, um, so we were providing out of county medical transportation. We saw that there was such a great demand for that, that when our nutrition sites did open, we did not stop that transportation because people still needed to get to, um, their medical appointments. And so that has kind of what put us behind over time. That and encompassed with a rise in transportation cost with our contractor for this fiscal year has, has put us this far behind.
When we attended the meeting, this, this is a, um, this year event. And then as, as you go into your budget next year, you're gonna budget a little bit, uh, more to take care of this. Is that correct?
We've applied for more, um, North Carolina DOT Section Fifty-three Ten Grant. That is elderly and disabled transportation. So we've applied for, instead of two hundred thousand, three hundred thousand. And then we're applying for a hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant with the, um, PTRC, which is an ARPA grant as well.
Any questions? Any question? You understand what the request is? Do I have a motion and a second?
I'd like to make a motion that we budget for this.
Do I have a second?
A second, Mr. Chairman.
Any other discussion? Oh, in favor, cast, oh, just cast your vote, whether you're in favor or not.
Vote's in. And that motion carries five oh six zero.
Thank you.
And I want to thank Trish and Scott for participating in this. You know, this is essentially a transfer within departments. I mean, Trish has had a lot of lapse salaries this year, even though good news, DSS is filling back up, so. Um, but she was willing to help out with this, so I just want to give a shout out for the board here.
Yeah, thank you, Trish. And Scott did...
Yes, Scott as well also was agreed to put, planning, they agreed to participate.
Oh, wonderful, thank you.
Thank you. Well, the next item on the agenda has been pulled. The next item to discuss is appointments to Piedmont Tribe Workforce Development Board. Ms. Harris.
One thing I've learned, um, in speaking with Shamika at the PTRC, their rules are a little bit different than ours. And folks from the school systems or our educational entities are not allowed to serve as one of these representatives. So the other things we have on there are all good, but I, I am looking for another one, either for, from a community-based organization or one of our apprenticeship groups. I've reached out to EGR and I've reached out to the college to find another individual to serve in that capacity. It, it's one of those or a labor, labor organization. So I'm still searching for the fifth one because I didn't find this out until Friday. Um...
So Mr. Brown's removed.
Mr. Brown will not be able to serve. He was really looking forward to it, so I'm hoping that they'll reach out to them on a different level.
Have you reached out to Hal Ruth, who's expressing interest?
Mr. Ruth cannot serve.
He's, 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 um, he's got the same credentials that Joe, Joe does.
Well, Joe is actually the president of the chamber. He represents the chamber.
I think we're picking and choosing who can go on there. And that's what I did like from the get-go, was losing local control.
I understand that, sir. And Mr. Frye and I have both reached out and they sent us their rules and regulations and they are set at a different level than what ours are. And I'll let Mr. Frye speak more to that, but we got a pretty...
Can you send me the, the, the legal aspect of that? I want to see that.
Uh, Commissioner, I challenged that also.
Yeah.
Hal has been a friend and colleague.
And he's served on his board, so he's familiar with it.
Great experience in the community, um, and, uh, is well respected in the community. And he, uh, had shared his disappointment with me. And, uh, I got the contact information with PTRC from Ms. Harris. And, uh, we went back and forth from this for some time. And, uh, I, I have spoken with Hal about that since then. Um, I think he has accepted that, but I know he is very disappointed about it, as I was.
And one thing that Shamika did let me know is even though he may not be able to officially serve on the board, that their meetings are open to the public and she will add him to the list, send him the agendas and everything. So he's more than willing to come to every board meeting that they have.
Well, that was my concern from the get-go, was they will take the local control away from this board.
They, they treat...
And from our local entity and then start telling us what we're going to do and when we're going to do it. And that's wrong. We ought to have the control of what goes on within our county and who we want on that board and it's not PTRC.
I'll be glad to share with, uh, to forward to you and forward to the board, the email string that I had back and forth with them about this and also with Mr. Ruth, the email.
And I want some supporting legal evidence to support what they're saying.
That's what I requested also because I was surprised.
What excludes him, he's a retired teacher, is that what I hear?
He's just retired.
Just retired.
He's just retired.
Actually have, they want you to be actually representing a, a business.
I get you.
So we hire him part-time. He's a member of the Chamber of Commerce who represents businesses and it makes no sense.
I agree.
And he served on, he's familiar with it and it just makes no sense.
I understand, we're gonna need to pick up with them.
You might mention that whenever we were, as a board, making a decision of whether to go with them or to keep our own, the, the main consideration or one of the main considerations is loss of control.
Right.
And this is a first step for loss of control. He assured us that would not be the case.
He absolutely did, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, he did.
Sarah Law was asked that question and he made sure that we understood that we would be able to choose who we wanted to on that board.
Right.
Any other discussion?
That's pretty...
Can I have a motion and a second to approve these three appointments as requested?
It would be, I'm sorry, I'm, I made a mistake. It's four.
What?
Four, not three. That's my bad.
I never spelled four that way.
That is my bad, I'm sorry. It's, so it's to approve the four and I'll let Mr. Thomas know, or Mr. Brown know that, um, we'll, we'll try to figure out a workaround for him on another level there. Cause I do know that they've got folks on the, on the educational realm that, that work with them.
Yeah. These four, T-H-R-E.
Yes, I'm sorry, sir.
I'm just digging at you.
I know you are.
A motion and a second to approve these four as requested.
I'll make a motion that we approve the four.
I have a second.
A second.
Motion made a second. Any other discussion? Cast your vote.
All of the votes are in.
And that motion carries five oh six zero. Thank you all. I'll prob, I'll be working on that, the last one and bring it back hopefully to twenty-sixth. And I'll keep you posted if I move forward.
That con, that concludes our commissioner's meeting. We'll go into the public hearing portion. Um... Are y'all ready? I, I wait back there.
Yeah, can he break the rules or something?
PTAR. Is PTAR first?
Yes, yeah, Piedmont Tribe Workforce Development Board, we just voted on that.
Just a second or two to get back up on the agenda.
Okay.
We've got so many things on the consent agenda, it takes me a minute to get everything backed up.
It says on the public hearing. That's what it says.
A school official, a superintendent workforceer tomorrow. And they're now telling us we can handle one of those.
Piedmont Tribe Ambulance and Rescue PTAR, Mr. Smith and Mr. Haynes.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Um, Alton's here for any detailed questions along with Chuck, who did a lot of work on this, so I want to give him a shout out as well. Um, this is our, hopefully our conclusion of opening up the ambulances, uh, franchise ordinance to the BLS ALS. We went through the insurance issues at one of the meetings, uh, not too long ago, got through that, I think. So tonight is the public hearing on, uh, PTAR's franchise ordinance submission.
I'm good to go. If y'all got any questions, I'll be more than glad to answer any of them. PTAR has served us many years now, uh, without any consequence or, um, they've done good work for us.
All right.
How long have you been serving for us now, Paula?
I declare the public hearing open.
Okay.
You have any questions?
The board? Kind of what's the intentions there, uh, Alton?
Um, so they do our BLS for us. Um, they keep a truck here twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five. They, they station it out at Thomasville Hospital. Um, she showed me some numbers. They average somewhere in the neighborhood of about ten scheduled calls a day. So outside of that, outside of their schedules, we can reach out to them if we, we need some assistance with something. If they're available, they'd be more than glad to, to respond. I talked to, uh, the chief today, Ms., Ms. Limeberry. And, um, and if we have some sort of extraordinary event, such as, um, some sort of a disaster situation, we can call over there and they'll send us trucks from their headquarters over there in High Point as well and Guilford County, so they don't have any issues with that whatsoever. But on a normal basis, they stay pretty, pretty booked up with their schedules. But if they're available, they will run a call for us and help pick up some, some stuff that, that we can't handle.
So pretty much non-emergency?
They are non-emergency most of the time, yes, sir.
Okay. Have we negotiated a rate with them or how's that?
Uh, they use the same rate that we do. They're set by the same standard that we have. So whatever our rate is, I don't think we've raised our rate yet, but that's what they charge. They charge the same level that we do.
So they would deal directly to the individual?
They do.
All right.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Alton, uh, I know when we first talked about this, we talked about, you know, the, the truck twenty-four, seven, but they were there, they were also going to be there to, as a backup truck. And you're saying only if they're available? Is that what I'm hearing you say?
So outside their schedules, cause you know, they take scheduled calls during the day. They, they, they run the, the doctor's office trips or the scheduled appointments for, for maybe some sort of imagery or something like that. So they, they've got a time that they schedule every day. And so outside of that, if they're available, they'll, they'll help, they'll help us out.
No other questions?
They're averaging about ten calls a day. And so that, that, that burden's off of us as well, when we used to do it some years ago when we ran our own non-emergency service.
Any other questions?
I do have one quick one. Is that ten, ten that they already contracted with, is that going to pretty much max them out? Or do they feel like they have some time to, uh, give us if we in need?
Paula, you want to step up here and help me out with that? Instead of me speaking for you?
When we started, started this and we were talking about it, the whole purpose of, of expanding this was that they would supply, you know, to open it up, they would supply a truck here that would, would basically run EMS backup or, or assist us if we needed it. I didn't know there was going to be a stipulation on it.
Well, this is pretty much the service they've done for us so many years. I know we opened it up, but they provide the same service and they run our, they run those scheduled calls. So you want to speak a little bit more about helping us and backing us up somewhat?
Well, so, um, we do have the one ambulance that's scheduled to Thomasville Medical Center twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five. We have a fleet of mini ambulances that we run for other counties. Um, and so during the daytime, when we have scheduled calls, sometimes we're pulling from our fleet from High Point because we take people, for, for instance, from Lexington, they're affiliated with, they're a Baptist. So when we go to Baptist for an appointment, it can take hours. So it's not just a one hour turnaround or a ninety-minute turnaround, can take hours. So that one truck is gone, so we have to supplement with our other fleet, um, to, which is the ten, about ten calls a day. So there really is very little time, uh, for any other calls to work in. And on the weekends, it may not be quite as busy. Um, our busiest, uh, time of the week over here is usually, uh, Tuesdays and Fridays. And our peak time of the day is around, um, anywhere from one to four or five o'clock for those appointments. And so after hours, of course, we're not quite as busy, but the calls are very time consuming. Up the road to Baptist and Forsyth, doing the transfers out where the hospital is, uh, sending folks to a higher level of care. So we stay backed up, really. And we're supplementing with the ambulances from our other bases, uh, in addition to what is stationed here on many days.
So you're pretty much just off.
You got any other questions, Tom?
Yeah, so I guess what I'm not understanding, will you be able to give us some ambulances and some service if, if we need it most of the time or you just don't really know?
Not likely, um, but we are always willing and we have always ran mutual aid. Anytime, um, Davidson nine one one is called and said, we're out, out of ambulances, we have an emergency, you know, we can drop sometimes what we're doing, so to speak, and, uh, put a convalescent on hold, uh, to, to back them up. But it is, has been few and far between because we are just that, that booked up.
So I guess, Alton, I'd just like to see you track it for like, uh, ninety days or something and see how many times we asked for it and how many times they were available to help us. And that way we kind of know if it, if it's going to help us out.
They feel a big need for us or a big, a big gap.
I'm sure they do. We appreciate what you do. We're just trying to make sure that above and beyond that, if we need non-emergency, that, that we got something we can count on pretty much, you know? So we'll see how it goes.
Commissioner.
And certainly we're willing.
I was just gonna say, it's pretty much what's, what's already been said. What you're really offering is what we already got, correct?
That's right.
What we've had for, what did you say, how many years?
Uh, we've been, uh, in Davidson County since two thousand. We've been in business for fifty-two years. And so we...
And so the President's service is a big benefit to you?
It is.
Okay, but we're not looking at any additional?
If, if they wasn't there, it would be a strain on our system for sure. But you imagine that many calls and, you know, the scheduling and that, that length of time and kind of, kind of a violation that we don't want to do that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Ms. Chairman, I, I think Commissioner Yates said it best when he said, you know, the ten, the ten calls is kind of at the max. And I think you answered that. Anything above that is not feasible. So the ten you're handling possibly right now is about your limit, correct?
Yes, sir, it is.
Ten-four.
Gotcha. Yeah.
Right, and, and we, of course, have so, uh, ourselves suffered through the staffing shortages, that is nationwide. We're playing catch-up. The community colleges were closed during COVID, so they were not turning out personnel. So EMS in general across the United States, it has suffered. Um, and we have folks who are putting in many, many hours of overtime and extras and, um, we're, we're holding our own though. We have longevity that we offer you, our eight full-time people here in this county. Um, all of them but one live in Davidson County. And we're proud to say we employ, um, seven out of eight people and then the eighth person just merely lives over the, the county line. So we've been stable with these eight, eight folks. Um, we do offer the stability and, uh, regularity, longevity. And we, we believe that we provide a good quality, reputable service as our track record shows.
All right, we thank you. And there may be some other questions that come up. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak either in favor of or against this issue?
And the other thing too, sir, is we offer our, our ambulances that it advanced life support, not, not just BLS. Um, and so a lot of the transfers that we're doing from the hospital to a higher level of care may have an IV, which by us being that credential allows for us to not need to turn it over to EMS, which would take them out of county, um, and take that unit out of service for your, your emergencies here.
Okay, thank you. Being as how there's, uh, no comments from the audience, I declare the public hearing closed. Um, the board have any other comments or questions? Hearing done. The order this franchise requires two votes. It will be placed back on the June twenty-sixth consent agenda for approval.
But if you could go ahead and vote this evening on the first vote, that would be great.
I'd like to hear what Commissioner Yates, uh, Mr. Chairman's proposal was in the form...
I'd like to hear what Commissioner Yates, uh, Mr. Chairman's proposal was in a form of a motion. Does that would need to be in motion?
I mean, they're going to continue to do this. I kind of felt-
Just renew on the franchise.
This was part, is this not part of what we was trying to add to get?
Yeah, we just have no takers. And so you're just essentially opening up the possibility if she has capacity to do it.
That's what I thought we was voting on, yes. So it ain't really the renewal. It's kind of got an addition to the-
You're right. You just added a, you, she runs convalescent, but she can run an ALS or a BLS call now, if y'all vote to do it, rather than not. And we, we haven't had any takers on this. I know Alton is working with the, uh, folks across the river, America Trans Media, too.
I was supposed to meet with that gentleman in Kansas.
I have not been successful in getting these people to apply.
I think we just need to leave him alone, try to find somebody else. So again, I guess in my motion, I'm, I'm, I'm definitely for this and, and voting for it. But I would like, like for you to track it 90 days to see, you know, when we call, if they're able or they're not. I'd like to see if it's a 50%, 75%, whatever their capability is. And nothing against you guys, I get it, you know? But that may tell us if we need to do something else internally, okay? So.
And, and this is, this is our board's-
There's not a motion. Um, one of the things that you might do whenever you're tracking it is track that separate from what you normally do, so we can see what the addition is, what the addition would be.
Yes, sir.
I need, thank you. I need a motion on this franchise?
I'll make a motion, we approve it.
Is there a second? Second? Any other questions?
That's all it takes, isn't it? Two votes?
The second vote is on the June 26 consent agenda. We'll vote on it again. Has everybody voted?
We've all got to vote.
It requires two votes. So instead of putting it on for deliberation again, if y'all vote for it-
Oh, gotcha.
We're just putting it on-
It's just going to be voted on another time?
Gotcha, okay.
Two for board, right?
Yes.
Man, that's blown me away, that's.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to confuse you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate, appreciate the help that you've given us in the past, and hopefully this works out.
All of the votes are in. The motion carries by a vote of 6-0.
All right. Next on the public hearing is Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, Mr. Welser.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, Community Development Block Grant funding is, derives from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. And then that money comes to our North Carolina Department of Commerce, and their, uh, their responsibility is to manage that here, here in our state. We've utilized Community Development Block Grant funds numerous times over the years here in Davidson County to support economic development projects. Um, in order to apply for, you know, Community Development Block Grant funds, two public hearings are required. The first is a generic-
Mr. Welser, let me go ahead and declare the public hearing open. I failed to do that. Go ahead.
So there's two public hearings that's required. The first public hearing is a generic public hearing, and that's what this public hearing's for. Um, we, we do this on an annual basis. You're only required to do it once a year. And what that does, that sets you up and prepares you in the event that a Community Development Block Grant or Economic Development Project would arise over the year of, this next year that you'd want to apply for funding for. In the event that happened, you'd have to have a second public hearing. And it would be at that public hearing that you would name the company, you would indicate the dollar amount being applied for, and what the funding would be used for. Um, at this time, we don't have, uh, Economic Development Project that we're, you know, we're looking at to apply for, for Community Development Block Grant funding. We're simply holding this public hearing tonight to get that generic public hearing out of the way, and that just opens the door for you in the event you decide to apply.
Great, thank you. Any questions, by the board?
Uh, just one quick question. You said we didn't have a project, and I understand what you're saying. But let's just say, uh, as an example, if we wanted to do a demolition CDBG grant, which is listed here, for the post office, could we apply for that then?
Uh, you could, you could.
Okay.
With the, uh, I will say with the demolition, though, the requirement is, is it, it does have to be owned by, by you, the county. So as long as you're still the owner, yes, that is, that would be an eligible, uh, project.
Okay.
Just up by the chair.
Hey, one in the audience wishes to speak either for or against this. Hearing done. I declare the public hearing closed. We don't have any action required by the board at this meeting. If an application is developed, the board of commissioners will announce and hold another public hearing, providing details about the proposed project before the application is submitted. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Sorry, I woke y'all up prematurely. Rezoning request by Arlis Andrew Loggins in Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, our first rezoning request tonight is for Mr. Arlis Andrew Loggins. And, um, I'll read the legal. Request by Arlis Andrew Loggins to rezone property located in Lexington Township, tax map 317, lot 69A, containing .61 acres more or less. Said property is located on the east side of Old US Highway 52, approximately 525 feet north of the Bethesda Road intersection. Rezoning is requested to change from that of O&amp;I Office and Institutional District to that of RS Low Intensity Residential District. Our PowerPoint's home. If you'd please divert your attention to the, um, to the overhead. If you'll remember several months back, there was a request by Ms. Linda Elliott to, to rezone this property just to the south of this, RA3. This is Old US Highway 52. Um, this Elliott's property was right here. Ms. Elliott is the daughter of Mr. Arlis Andrew Loggins. And Mr. Loggins is, I think Mr. Shore's the World War II veteran that you gave the second pen to tonight for, through Thomas, uh, Loggins. But what his request is, the back portion of this property is currently zoned RS. The front portion of this property is currently zoned Office and Institutional. Um, they're looking to unburden themselves from some tax burden. The, um, the O&amp;I is taxed at quite a higher rate than the RS or the RA3. So the request tonight is to just rezone the front portion of this from O&amp;I to RS. And I would ask, uh, Ms. Elliott or Mr. Loggins to come up. It'll either be Ms. Linda Elliott or Mr. Thomas Loggins representing their father.
Okay, as Mr. Loggins comes, I declare the public hearing open.
He, he wants to rezone it. Like I said, he is, uh, quite retired. He'll be 100 in October. And, um, for tax purposes, to take that burden off of him is the main thing. When, when he bought this, he started a business. There's a building right down beside him where, I don't know what they do now, but he made maps or sold maps out of it. And, uh, he's sold that since then. But the property needs to be rezoned, because he lives in a house on the backside of it now.
Any questions by the board? Thank you, sir. Anyone in the audience wishes to speak either in favor of or against this rezoning request?
All right, thank you.
Mr. Fry?
Mr. Crook, did you have occasion to make investigation with other county departments as to whether there are any outstanding claims against this property?
I did, uh, Mr. Fry, and there were no outstanding claims against this property.
Thank you.
And I had declared the public hearing closed. A staff recommendation?
Yes, sir. Uh, the applicant wishes to rezone their property, lower their tax burden. The property is currently split zoned Office Institutional and RS Low Intensity Residential District. Um, the RA, of the RS district which they're requesting is taxed at a base rate of $8,500 an acre. And there's a log home located on the RS portion of the, of the, uh, tract that's, that's being requested tonight. And staff, in staff's opinion, that is correctly zoned. Um, this subject property fronts Old US Highway 52, and this segment, segment has a wide array of, of uses along its length. North of the subject tract is an industrial warehouse, as Mr. Loggins alluded to, which was the old MAP Supply Company that was started by, uh, the applicant. Um, to the south is a single wide that Ms. Elliott rezoned several months ago. And, um, because this area, if you'll remember, staff had to recommend against Ms. Elliott's, um, rezoning, but laid out a path so that it could be approved. Because this, by the Davidson County Land Development Plan, isn't a corridor of economic opportunity. And unfortunately, the thing, same thing is true tonight. Um, but if the board wishes to offer Mr. Loggins some relief, staff would be more than comfortable, um, in just recommending the O&amp;I on the front of the property. And you could do that, because it is contiguous to an existing RS district, which meets the Davidson County zoning ordinances, one of the criteria for expanding a zoning district. And there could be a, um, the policy statement 616768610 and 74, the land development plan would also support it.
So your recommendation?
Well, my, my recommendation, unfortunately, it would, would have to be to deny it. But if the board so chose to, um, to approve it, then they could do it based on those criteria that I, uh, that I laid out.
Further discussion by the board? I have a motion in second to either approve or deny the rezoning request and to adopt a resolution statement of consistency.
Correct.
I want a clarification, Mr. Chairman. Uh, that rezoning request is to RS rather than to RA3?
It is to RS as opposed to RA3, yes, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I just wanted to get that clarification.
Did that change at the planning board level?
It did. It did. It was, it was amended at the planning board level.
And they approved it finally?
Five to zero. They approved it. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, if you'll entertain a motion, I'll entertain a motion, uh, that we approve, uh, the rezoning request, the statement of consistency.
Second. Motion in a second. Are there any questions by the board? Cast your vote.
All of the votes are in. And that motion carries by a vote of 6-0.
Thank you, sir. You're good to go.
You can get a Biggie at Wendy's with your tax saver. Next?
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our next request is by Thomas A. and Frieda C. Loggins to rezone property in Lexington Township, tax map 317, portions of lot 1A and 1G, in total 2.98 acres more or less. Said property is located on the east side of Old US Highway 52, approximately 970 feet south of the Salem Road intersection. Rezoning is requested to change from that of LI Limited Industrial District to that of RA3 Rural Agricultural District. Can I get the, there you go. Thank you.
Just a matter of one back and forth.
Gotcha. Okay. If you'll divert your attention, uh, to the board again. The property that was just in question was right here, up the road. Everything in Crosshatch here is the, is the property that is being requested by Arlis Andrew Loggins' son, Mr. Thomas A. Loggins. Um, currently, the property's vacant. I think there's a few outbuildings on it, and there is existing cell tower located on this property, which would actually remain LI. We, that, that was, uh, added to the request so that it would not become illegal non-conforming use. Uh, there'll be 2,500ths of an acre there. I think initially, this was, uh, rezoned to expand the MAP business at some point in the future, but I, I think the, um, the cell phone and the GPS did a, did an end to that. Mr. Mr. Loggins is here tonight to, um, to elaborate and expand on his request.
Is that the old Tom, old Howard Michael?
Yep.
I declare the public hearing open, Mr. Loggins.
Uh, we bought that land, uh, we, in 1990. I went to Texas and opened a branch of my dad's business in Texas. And we stayed out there a little over 20 years. And in 2011, we decided if we didn't come back, we weren't going to get to spend any time with our relatives. And, uh, so we brought our business back and moved just right down the road here. And it was still going, but GPSs, telephones, and all of that just really hurt MAPs. And then when COVID come along, it done it in. But we bought that property to put a warehouse on it in, uh, 2011, when we came back here. And, uh, we, we just kept going downhill. And, and when COVID hit, it just, it done us in. So, uh, uh, we had that rezoned to put a warehouse there, and, and we don't need that now. We need to sell the whole property. But, uh, it would be better if it were all zoned the same.
Okay. Any questions by the board? Anyone in the audience who wishes to speak either in favor of or in opposition to this request? Mr. Fry?
Mr. Crook, again, did you have, uh, opportunity to talk with other county departments with regard to whether there are any outstanding claims against this property?
I did, and there were none. Thank you.
I declare the public hearing closed. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Crook, what's the staff recommendation?
Um, subject property was zoned LI in, in Limited Industrial District on June 6, 2011 by Arlis A. Loggins and Thomas A. Loggins for the purpose of constructing a warehouse, as you've heard. Uh, the bulk of the industrial property sits back off of Old US Highway 52, approximately 450 feet. The LI property does contain a wireless telecommunications tower facility on it, which will remain LI. The remainder of the tract will be used for residential purposes. It does comply as RA3 with the Davidson County zoning ordinance and extending an existing district. And the, uh, Davison County Land Development Plan, um, would support this request, um, with policy statement 61676861074, uh, that would offer support. And staff would recommend approval and would ask you to adopt a statement of consistency.
Any further discussion by the board? Hearing done. Is there a motion in second to either approve or-
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, and adopt a resolution, uh, from a statement of consistency.
Was there a second, sir?
Huh?
Was there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. All of the votes are in. And that motion carries by a vote of 6-0.
The next rezoning request.
The, uh, the next request, Mr. Chairman, is for, uh, Barbara Erhart. I spoke with Ms. Erhart today. She was turned down by the planning board five to zero on, uh, May 16th. She's not in attendance tonight, and it's her intention to withdraw, uh, the application. She has not officially done that yet. So we would ask the board to continue this until the, um, the July 13th public hearing. And hopefully, she will have officially withdrawn by then, and we can just drop it, and no action will be required.
Chairman, does that need a motion? Do we need to, um, open and close the public hearing and do that, or just note that it's been rescheduled?
I think it would be appropriate at this point, if the board would just, um, direct that it be rescheduled for July 13.
Does that need a, a formal vote?
Let's, let's go through the formality of the-
Yeah, right, please. Is there a motion for that?
Motion to continue, as recorded.
Second. Cast your vote.
All of the votes are in. That motion carries by a vote of 6-0.
Next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, the last rezoning request we have tonight is a request by Brad Hewland to rezone property located in Thomasville Township, tax map 319, a portion of lot 27, containing two acres more or less. Said property is located on the south side of Canoye Road, approximately .66 miles west of the Gate Road intersection. Rezoning is requested to change from that of RA3 Rural Agricultural District to that of RC Rural Agricultural District.
Okay, I declare the public hearing open. Mr. Hewland? Tell us what you're doing.
Okay, so we have, uh, the rural commercial already up towards the road. We basically want to extend it to cover the buildings. Because we're trying to get a dealer's license for, um, cars. And the reason we have to have the dealer's license is because we can't get a, um, from the county, they give you a business license for the junkyard. And we have to have either a dealer's license or a, uh, business license so that we could sell parts online. The carpart.com requires us to have-
The carpart.com requires us to have a business license or a dealer's license. Now, that being said, that's going to be our first reason to get the dealer's license. And we have to rezon in the first just to get a DMV inspector out there. So there'll be a bonus, I guess, we could sell cars if we want, but we prefer just so we could sell parts.
Any questions by the board? You want to explain that in yellow?
Yes, sir. This, this property has been used, this is a nineteen seventy-six aerial photo. The area in question is kind of right here. As you can see there, it's been used as a junkyard since before the seventies, or the seventy-six aerial anyways. When the, when the property was zoned, which was done back in nineteen, before nineteen eighty, you can see that the RC was placed on the front of the property, but it doesn't include the existing buildings. The Crosshatch area basically covers this portion of the property. They're basically wanting to extend the RC so that they can get the proper permits for the dealer's license. And they will continue to use it as a, as a junkyard. There was some discussion at the planning board level. The property is completely fenced, but our, the county's zoning regulations require screening as well. And Mr. Hew, Hewland is aware of that. He's willing to put the screening up to bring that portion of it into compliance.
We've already done that.
But the screening's already, okay. So he's in compliance with the legal nonconforming section of the ordinance, which is what the junkyard is. That can continue whether the rezoning takes place or not. This is simply to assist him in getting his dealer's license.
Any questions by the board? No question? Anyone in the audience wants to speak, either in favor of or against this request? Mr. Frye?
Mr. Kirk, did you have occasion to talk with inspections and environmental health and the fire marshal and the tax office and the county attorney's office to see if there were any pending claims against this property?
I did, Mr. Frye, and there, there were no claims against the property.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Declare the public hearing closed. What's the staff recommendation?
Staff is going to support the, the expansion, the request, based on the fact that it does comply with Article seven, ten of the ordinance. It's an expansion of an existing district. And I don't have my policy statements right here in front of me, but there are several sections of the Davidson County Land Development Plan, policy statements one one, one five, one seven, one eight, five four, and seven four, that do support the request. We, at the staff level, can't imagine anything in an expanded RC district that's more intensive use than the existing legal nonconforming junkyard. We'd ask you to approve it and adopt a statement of consistency.
Any further discussion by the board? Have a motion and a second to approve or deny?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the request and a statement of consistency.
I second. Commissioner, any other discussion? Cast your vote.
All of the votes are in. And that motion carries five votes, six zero.
Motion to close session after a brief?
Thank you, Mr. Kirk. Thank you all very much. Second. Terrible. I got it. Hey, yes.
Take care.
Motion returned, open session.
I think she's letting us wait.
We're good.
We're good?
Mm-hmm.
Motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second. All in favor, huh?
Ah.
Right.
... which the Board gave the county manager direction for further action. The second was an attorney-client matter with regard to an action pending before the North Carolina Industrial Commission, Reverta Benjamin Bolware versus Davidson County and Sedgwick Claims Management Services, Inc., and the Board gave counsel direction with regard to that litigation.
Motion and second adjourned.
Motion.